Yes, by my watch, it's one o'clock. Time to call to order the Board of Directors. Regular meeting, this is a continued meeting. From September eighteenth. Do you have a roll call, please?
Director Mar Hoffen.
Yeah.
Director Duff.
President.
Director Griffith.
President.
Vice President Sewell.
Here.
President Martin.
Here.
Thank you, we have Corin.
Yeah. And I see that all the board members are present, so I can skip. The. Remote meeting participation pursuant to AB twenty four forty nine. And. Move on to public input. Do we have any members of the public wishing to address the board?
Not online, President Martin.
Anybody here in the audience? Okay, we don't seeing none. This since this is a continuation of that meeting, I'll go directly to our general manager, Brian.
Thank you, President Martin, members of the board, the public. This is a continuation item of the NG service contract with NG. Excuse me, Energy Services Contract with NG Services US. As we talked about before, we were still at the. At our last meeting, we were negotiating the price and some of the contract terms. Since then, a majority, if not all, the big items have been negotiated to both. The MSWD and NG satisfaction, there are some smaller items that have to be resolved. I want to bring a clean contract to you to vote on. So if we do decide to continue this item because we feel comfortable with the price and the terms that are out there. We'll probably continue this to our study session on next Thursday. And then have a final approval vote there because by then all the contract will be there. We can decide today not to continue the item. And then at that point, then we'll start the process over again. So with that being said, I would like NG to come up and talk about the changes they have made to the. Contract, which again, you all have a copy of a hard copy as well as there is copies here for the public as well. As well as the price change. And then following that, Kenwood Energy will provide a presentation and then we'll be able to have an open discussion. Thank you.
Welcome, Ashu.
Good afternoon, Mr. President Martin, members of the board, Mr. Macy and staff, Ashu Jain with NG. So. We've been working hard with your staff to come up with the final proposal, final pricing and final contract. And. I think the contract, like Mr. Macy said, the contracts were probably ninety five percent there. All the major items have been resolved. So we. Did want to give you the good news and you probably already know, but. We were able to reduce our price by an additional million dollars. So we are now at seventeen point eight million. We started in nineteen point three. And. Just a little bit, but how we got there because it was. Some. Good fortune and you know, some really hard work. So. You know, we were able to negotiate a much better price for panels. Because of this. Big renewable energy conference in Vegas and. So we were able to negotiate a much better price there. We. Negotiated hard with our subcontractors and were able to get a five percent reduction on our electrical price. We reduced our contingencies quite a bit. We reduced the price for the trees because that was an error. Thank you for pointing that out. And. You know, the. The other thing that happened was business has been amazing for us. And. We recalculated our overheads and our overheads came down because that's the. How we spread our fixed expenses over our sales. So we were able to reduce half a million dollars just in our overheads and. We reduced our margin. So with all that, we've been able to reduce a million and a half and. All credit goes to Mr. Macy and Mr. Friend and the rest of your staff and. Tim Kenwood Energy for. You know. Driving us there. So but we're very happy. We're happy with the project. We're happy with the price. Would love to do the project for you. I did check with Bank of America today. Your interest rate today would have been five point eight eight, four point eight eight percent. So you're, you know, at four point two five, you're extremely. You're in a really good rate. So hopefully the board will decide. On the twelfth to move forward with the project. Unfortunately, I would not be here, would not be able to be here in person, but I can call in and I will call in. I'm not sure about the rest of the staff, our staff, but I'll be happy to answer any questions. I have the same presentation that I had last time. I have a. I have a cash flow, the most recent cash flow. I don't know if you have it. It's done by Bank of America. If you want, I can hand it out. Yeah.
As long as there's copies for the public, that'd be.
There's ten copies, so.
That's perfect.
I can.
Yeah, we'll make sure that gets scanned and be put as part of this presentation.
And the rest of the, what I have to present is something I talked about last, last time I was here about. You know. Why? We are really the gold standard in, in, in this industry in California. I don't know if I need to reiterate all that, but I'll be happy to. Talk more about that. But that's all I had. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Amber, you have any questions? Concerning the changes?
I was just looking at his, maybe could I come last, please?
Okay. Yeah, I think all of us are. Seeing this for the first time. You have any questions, Robert?
If I could, President Martin, this cash flow. Is something that's been presented by NG. It does not match up with the cash flow that we would be ultimately taking to Bank of America. One of the things you see on this far right corner is net savings. That has been a. That is a benefit to the district that. In, under this. Process, we would be getting a net savings for our electrical bills. So instead of spending the money for electrical items, we would be getting an offset immediately. I believe what the board direction was is that we wanted to look at that a little bit differently to make sure that we were making principal and interest payments. And not getting that benefit savings. We would rather invest in those early years so we didn't have to pay it at the back end. Arturo is prepared to talk about that and what that differences would look like. But in reality, that net savings number, if you just take it to zero and put that back into the payment column. It makes these numbers look a lot better because we're not paying that long term debt service off. So that would be the only thing that's a little bit different if that was any of the questions that you had. Because that would be more of a financing question. Once we decide to sign the contract with NG and move forward with them. So hopefully that clarifies that.
My apologies. So this was something that was being exchanged over emails by Bank of Americas, but you know, how it's financed really is not. Nothing to do with us, so. Whatever the district decides is fine.
Ivan, do you have any questions?
Not right now. I think after staff and Kenwood presentations, maybe. I'll have a better idea.
Okay.
Questions.
Ted?
Yes. Can you explain to me the difference between that? Are we putting in type P or N solar panels? Jeff, do you know that? We're doing tier one, I know that. One, and I got an email in tier one and had both. P and N's in the tier one.
I believe the distinguishing characteristics, only because the director shared this information with me before, is the warranty period. And I believe that P is through twelve years and. N is through twenty years.
Twenty-five is what we have.
Okay, yeah, and that's what I was going to. By the warranty period, I think that would dictate what type it is. So.
We have a twenty-five year manufacturer's warranty.
So according to my information, then. The type P has a twelve year product. And a twenty-five year warranty or performance.
We have a twenty-five year warranty on performance.
Performance, yes.
It's part of the contract.
The type N is a twenty year product and a thirty year warranty for performance.
I have not personally heard of a type of a thirty year warranty on solar panels yet, but.
And. Type N will hold more than seventy percent of the market by twenty thirty-two. So by twenty thirty-two, we'll be halfway through and. Our solar panels won't be.
You still have, you paid for a. Panel that will be here for twenty-five years.
They're finding that with type N, they're getting twenty-five. Point seven percent more efficiency.
Well. I'm not even sure about what type N is and if it's, you know, what the cost is and whether it's. Generally.
Excuse me for interrupting you. If you're not sure, you can go ahead and look this up on a. The web, Solar Magazine. There was also another solar magazine out there that had some information. But these folks seem to know what they're talking about. You can tell by their advertising that they were.
Yeah.
In the business. So. I.
Well.
I'm curious. If we don't. The, the, as I mentioned to you before. This industry now is with these solar panels is moving so fast.
Right.
I am afraid if we. We move too fast on this now, we may be in two years when it's finally, the project's finally done. We may already be looking at outdated solar panels. That's my problem.
What you're saying is correct, that the industry. Isn't, it's actually isn't moving that fast because I've heard about, you know, different technologies since the day we entered this business twenty years ago.
Sure.
I will, you know, I've heard about MIT. Putting solar panel, you know, solar panels on the windows and roads getting solar panels and. But none of that has really panned out commercially. So. My answer to all this is always, we're guaranteeing the project for twenty years. We're guaranteeing the savings. You're getting a project with the panels for twenty-five years warranty. No matter what happens in the future. If you decide to go forward with this project, this technology today, it's a sound technology that's been around for a while. I'm not sure what's. Coming in.
Let me ask you this question.
Yes, sir.
The controller. We're gonna have to wait for how long for that controller?
What controller?
For the, for the panels.
Inverter?
A converter, I'm sorry.
Inverter, yeah.
Yeah. So can you guarantee that if that company goes broke or we don't get that inverter, that you'll eat the cost on the panels?
The inverters, we are buying twenty years warranty on the inverters.
Yes, but it's eighteen month. Wait, wait on it, isn't it?
The inverters don't have a weight. I don't know what the delivery period is. I'm guessing it'll be around six months. Jeff, do you know? Around six months. The weight is actually on switchgear. On large switchgear, like for the RESBCT project, solar project. That's where the weight is for large electrical switchgear, the manufacturing is. And I, you know, it's, it's an artificial. We can have a philosophical discussion here, but. If you, if you pay them more, they'll, they'll.
Just a simple yes or no.
There is, there is a weight for, there could be a weight of twelve to eighteen months on large.
And what if one of these companies go out of, out of business during this six month and the other one at eighteen months?
That's not a, a unique. Item. There are several manufacturers of large switchgear.
Ah, so why, why can't we get it sooner?
Because all of them have large delivery periods and we are constantly negotiating with Siemens, with Cutler Hammer, with all of these companies and. It's a very weird market. They'll, they, for one of our projects at El Dorado Union High School District, they took an order. And after six months returned it to us and they said they can't fulfill it. They just said, go do whatever you want. So it's a different, it's a difficult market when it comes to electrical switchgear especially.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Amber.
I think, like Director Sewell, I need to wait until after the whole presentations from everyone so that I can direct my questions appropriately.
Okay, Robert?
Yeah.
Okay. Ivan, anything further?
No, thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ashu. Thank you. President Martin, I would ask Tim Holmes, he has a presentation from Kenwood Energy. Tim, if you can share your screen, I think the floor is yours. Explain to. Board. What his role is in this. I'm sorry, his entry slide.
No, you guys can hear me now, right?
Yes.
Okay, so. Hi, good afternoon, board members. My name is Tim Holmes. I'm with Kenwood Energy. We are an energy management consulting company. We were founded in nineteen ninety-nine. You know, I personally have more than thirty-five years of experience in energy management, working with utilities, renewable energy, sustainability. Kind of on and on greenhouse gas management. We're consultants, so we're not. Selling any products. And we're not completing any installations or anything. We're not contractors. We represent the district. We kind of, we consider ourselves an extension of your staff. And we're doing our best to help you make decisions that are in the best interest of the district. And I personally am a professional mechanical engineer. And. Let's see. So Kenwood Energy's scope of work for this project was to do a peer review. And we're going to do a peer review of the installation costs. We're going to do a peer review of the savings estimates. Peer review of the cash flows. Of the Energy Service Contract and then provide you with some final thoughts. So. Starting with the proposal cost review, which is scope of work item number one. A common metric for evaluating the cost of solar systems is dollars per KW. And the proposal is for seventeen point eight million dollars. There are four thousand one hundred sixty-seven KW. So that comes out to a proposed cost of four thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars per KW. So. I'll be referring to that as forty-three hundred dollars per KW. So it's about forty-three hundred bucks per KW. So this table. Has a lot of numbers in it, but these are ten projects that Kenwood Energy has worked on over the last year and a half, two years. And we tried to pick. Some that are very similar. And. You can look down on the bottom row, the average cost per KW of those ten projects is about twenty-seven hundred dollars, twenty-eight hundred dollars. But the ones highlighted in green are probably. More typical of this project. Those three that are highlighted in green. Those are Energy Service Company type contracts, so they're similar to this, the NG proposal. And if you average those, those are about thirty-five hundred dollars per KW as compared to the four thousand two hundred that you. Or the forty-three hundred that this proposal includes. And if we were to. Just consider the highest cost one, the one that cost three thousand five hundred ninety-four dollars. That project, it's unique and it, it's the most expensive for a reason. It has, it includes. The demolition of an existing five hundred and eighty KW solar system that's been in the ground for about twenty years. That includes, you know, removing all the racking, removing the concrete, recycling the materials, removing the panels. Sending the panels to the recyclers. It also includes. Some long conduit runs. It's for a wastewater treatment plant. And their land is probably about a quarter mile from the facility. So there's long conduit runs. They have step up, step down transformers. So there's a lot going on in this project. And if you compare it to the proposed cost of about forty-three hundred bucks. There's a ratio of about eighty-four percent. So the proposed cost is seventeen point eight million. If you multiply that seventeen point eight million by eighty-four percent. We would kind of expect this project come in at about fifteen million dollars. So there's a delta. Of about two point eight million dollars. But that, the, the, the budget impact is actually a little bit more because. Once you enter into the contract, you're also going to need to have a district contingency to cover costs that are unexpected. If we assume that district contingency at fifteen percent. The seventeen point eight million dollar project has a. Two point seven million dollar contingency and it comes out to about twenty. Twenty million, twenty point five million dollar impact on the budget. If it were at about fifteen million, you'd be adding about two point two million. It's a seventeen point two million dollar project. You know, that hits the budget. That's a delta of about three point three million dollars. So the second scope of work item was to check the savings that NG has included in the proposal. NG uses a, a model called Energy Tool Base. Which is kind of the industry standard out there. Kenwood Energy uses an internally developed model. You have savings result from two types of projects. You have. Something that's net energy metering. Net energy metering is where you're offsetting costs. For the facility. Located where the solar system is. The RESBCT is where you build a large solar system. And you offset costs at facilities. That are not located where the solar system is. And you can see that, you know, our, our evaluation of the savings are very, very close to what. NG has proposed. In fact, we're slightly higher. So we're very comfortable with the savings that NG has included. In all of their analysis and their cash flows. So the third thing we did is cash flow analysis. And. So we've already talked about the cost and for, for the rest of this, we are using NG's proposed cost. You guys are probably familiar and have had discussions about the Inflation Reduction Act Direct Payment. And how it can cover quite a bit of the cost of the system. And this is. How it's calculated. So we have all of these different line items. And everywhere that there's a yes. Those are our line items that the district will be able to meet. Those requirements. And down at the bottom. There's, we've reduced it to be conservative. We're assuming that you're using tax exempt financing. And so what that does is it takes a forty percent. A, a direct payment and it reduces it to thirty-four percent. So we are in agreement with NG on how this would be applied. And thirty-four percent of thirteen, or seventeen point three million is about six point six million dollars. Highlighted in yellow is the low income community adder. That's kind of special. We've assumed, we believe you will get it. The, the caveat is that you have to go through an application process. That application process is coming up quickly. But it will also come up next year in the fall. And it should come up the year after that as well, but you do have to go through an application process on that. And that ten percent low income bonus is about one point eight million dollars. And so we, we reproduced. The cash flow with a couple of. Additions to it is, in the beginning, we've added a cost of five hundred thousand dollars. To cover just miscellaneous costs and also interest and things like that. Plus, we added a discount rate of two point five percent. So you'll notice on this red line, you can kind of see that it. It's a little bit of a curve and that's because the two point five is. Taking future money and discounting it so that it's. Closer to equal to what today's value of money is. There, the one thing we couldn't. Reproduce in the NG cash flow. So the red line is the Kenwood Energy Cash Flow. The green line is the NG Cash Flow. Is in between years two and three. The savings for the RESBCT jump two hundred thousand dollars. And I don't understand why, so I assumed that that was an error. If. If it was an error. You can see over in year two. My projections are slightly higher than NG's projected cash flow. So if it was an error. The NG green line should be just like the red line and just slightly below it. If for some reason it was not an error and, and they convinced me that it's not, then. This red line will then come up and be slightly above the green line. Either way. You know, it's pretty significant cash flow over twenty years. And we stopped, you know, you got three point five million compared to six point six mil, or six point five million. And we stopped at twenty years. Because the NEM program has this grandfathering clause. We don't know what the NEM program is going to look like in twenty years. There, I, I, I'm. Pretty certain that you will still be generating energy. And I'm pretty sure that there will still be. Value in those further years. I just don't know what they are. So I didn't model those. The cash flow includes the low income adder. It includes the five hundred thousand dollars that I mentioned before. But it does not include any of the district contingency. So item number four is the Energy Service Contract. So the contract. Consists of all these components that you see listed here. The blue items are things that. Had significant, we had significant comments on. But as both Brian and Ashu have mentioned. You know, we, we put those comments into the document. We shared that document with NG. And we had a meeting, we discussed all the comments and we've come back and. Most of the significant comments. Have been addressed and agreed upon. And now. The issues are probably. Can be categorized as wording. You know, we need, might need to change wording in a number of areas, but. The significant issues have been resolved. So I feel pretty comfortable with the contract at this point. And then the final thoughts. So. You know, the, the, the proposed cost doesn't have to be the lowest cost out there because you do want a good quality vendor doing the installation. But it does need to be competitive. You know, Kenwood Energy, we confirm the savings estimates. We feel very comfortable with those. The cash flows show a good return on investment. So. If you were to move forward, it does have, it does save money. For the district, it, money that instead of spending on energy can then be spent on other things that the district might see as more important. The Energy Service Contract needs work, but since I wrote this, that work has been reduced significantly. There is some urgency related to the IRA low income adder. But as we mentioned, we believe that you can just reapply for that next year if you miss this year's application time. So it's kind of a board decision is. You know, direct staff to negotiate with NG. Direct the staff to pursue another path. And I guess there's a third one. That's not on here, which would just be to. Essentially extend this board meeting to another date so that more information can be gathered. And that's the end of my presentation and I am open to questions if you have any.
Okay. Ted?
And I'm happy to answer the questions you were asking NG to, asking Ashu a minute ago, if you want to re-ask.
Okay, go, please go ahead.
Um, the. The. PN comment. There are always. Changes in the. The, the chemistry on cells. And the N one that you're talking about is, is. Relatively new and frankly, I had not heard of it. I looked it up while you guys were talking before, so I have a little bit of information. What it, you know, it. Might be a better panel and it might have. A better guarantee. Moving forward. They're not common now. I, I know that. But the one thing is, is the panels you are buying, that the improvements in panels are in efficiency. You know, they get slightly more efficient over time and efficiency translates to space. So you know, ten years from now, you could install these same solar systems and they'll take a little bit less space. But overall, these solar panels are going to do what. We anticipate they're going to do for twenty years. And they are going to be successful in bringing that cash flow to you that. That we are looking at. They're, they're not going to be obsolete in two years just because somebody has come out with and. You know, an N panel.
Thank you for that explanation. For your straightforward. Presentation here. I appreciate it. And for your straightforward uh presentation here, I appreciate it.
Ivan? Yes, um, just over your, your example that you're pretty much basing it off of that thirty five hundred um cost at the wastewater plant. Um, was that a single site? And do you, I mean, we're going to have seven sites. Do you see multiple sites adding to the cost? And is that something that you factored in when you're doing your comparisons?
Um, I don't think multiple sites would cause it to be more expensive. Um, you know, you have, the RES BCT has some special conditions that will likely make it more expensive, which is that switch gear. And um, but you can see that's, you know, some of these projects should be less expensive and some should be more. I, I picked the highest because I think it has conditions that um we can say are comparable or perhaps even more expensive than we would think it would be. So I, I kept my analysis a bit conservative by picking the highest, highest cost item here.
Okay, and along those same lines, um, the total size that we have proposed is over four thousand uh kilowatts. Um, do you see that being a factor that could drive the price up compared to your example that's eleven hundred or?
Yeah, I think I see that as, as something that should actually drive the price down because there are economies of scale. And the overhead should be distributed over a much larger project.
Okay, thank you.
Robert? Amber? Did I stall long enough?
Thank you. Um. It's a hard decision. Uh, just to clarify, you're saying that you're satisfied with the changes that have been made. They've addressed the majority of the concerns that you've had as a, as your peer review went through. Um, with the exception of obviously being still almost two, I guess I'm a million and a half apart as far as the average cost. Um, this may be a question for Arturo. I'm not sure, but what would this look like financed? What would the total price be if with the new rates financed the way that they've proposed?
Uh, yes, President Martin and members of the board, uh, we did recalculate uh that number and it went down uh somewhat. However, um, there's a situation because the IRA is not guaranteed. Right now, we don't have a contract that says we're going to get that grant. But we would be uh uh held to the terms of the repayment of the loan of the six million dollars. Um, the first year, that's a creates an issue in terms of our ability to pay back in terms of the ratio uh right now that we can't meet. So I've been going back and forth with uh Bank of America to try to make sure uh that we're going to meet that ratio. Otherwise, it's not going to uh be approved by our current uh debtors that require us to meet that parity um issue. So in changing those numbers and keeps changing the interest rate, as you know, you hold back the uh principal payment. It extends the term, therefore it adds cost to that. So those numbers are still changing between uh two and three million dollars, depending on how you put them. So it is quite significant and we're still working through those. So unless if this is the final number, I could give you a, a number as to what it is, but we're still working on that.
Okay, and one more question, Arturo, if that's.
Arturo, is there a way to assume that this is the final number and that we can? I think the number that she's most focused with is the total program cost of twenty nine million dollars on the last number. Do we have a comparable number to that? I get the sense that I think we do, but based on what you just described, the answer maybe no. So if it knowing that it's still a draft form, it's drafted, this is, at least that gives us a comparison.
It does. Um, however, we are still bound by those requirements of the um debt, uh unless they change um. Unless we continue to spread those numbers or something changes, we're not going to get there. Um, so that is an issue that we're still working on. But the num, in terms of the numbers, there, there are comparables out there. Um, and I can assure you, based on the discussions I've had with several agencies, uh, that wouldn't be a problem for the district in terms of either meeting or exceeding the, the interest rates or um, the ability to go after one, a similar uh debt.
And this is kind of a very generalized question for you. We're going through our financial master plan. We're about to start our strategic plan process today. We have a lot of CIP projects on the list that had been, some of them have been on the list for a long time. Um, entering this kind of financing, what does that do for future financing? What kind of risks does that put us at as our ability to maybe finance the administrative building or finance the earthquake, retrofitting, et cetera? Could you kind of tell us where we're sitting with that?
Absolutely. And that's something I'm very, keeping an eye on very carefully because working on the numbers and literally changing one affects everything else. I have to be very specific in how much we can actually take on in terms of debt. So we're already struggling uh to meet these requirements based on the amortization that we're using. Uh, what Bank of America likes to do is they want to put the uh cost of the projects uh along with the benefit of the funding that's coming in. So we're getting that IRA payment that first year. They want us to put that money back, you know, to repay it, which makes sense. But again, the IRA uh grant is not guaranteed where we would have to be re- required to pay six million dollars in that debt. So I'm keeping an eye on that and it's honestly uh going to be tough for us to take on more uh debt, uh considering that we have that fifteen million dollars coming up with Wells Fargo. That is one of the, the issues that we're having in terms of how do we spread it depending on the type of debt that we go after. Uh, we are required on some of it to smooth it out over a certain amount of uh time. Others will not allow us to do that depending on the, the bank.
Right, right. And do you have any potential tricks up your sleeve that, that might provide some better financing options for us or a different way for us to approach this? Maybe a three-phase or a four-phase type way or something like that?
Not in terms of what we have in front of us, but in speaking to other agencies, financing agencies, uh, we do have that option to either get similar financing or better from what I've uh gathered. Um, we are a government agency. We're not going anywhere. We are a very secure financing in terms of that debt. So they would be more than grateful to come and get our business. Uh, you know, in terms of any of these um banks.
Okay, thank you so much for all the work you've done. Appreciate it. And for everyone too, I just, I, I know this has been a lot of work for NG and for all of our staff and we're very appreciative. This is a lot of information for us to digest and it's a big decision given everything that we have on our plate. The recent storm damage, the plans that we have in the future, the earthquake retrofitting, so many things that we have to consider as we make this decision. Um, I think the only other question I have would probably be for interim general manager Macy and, and possibly NG. I don't know who the right person to ask this to.
Don't go anywhere, Arturo. Not letting you out.
Would be, is there any way we could do this in like a three-phase contract? Is there any way we could break this up so that maybe we could finance phase one? Get that going, get phase two going. I'm just trying to think outside of the box in a way that would be easier for us to digest this as a community, easier for us to finance other things that are very equally important to our infrastructure. Any thoughts on that, General Manager Macy or NG or?
Well, the two things that come to my mind and as you're walking up, I'll try to get through some of the, my thought, original thoughts. Um, the NIM two point O does have a deadline. Uh, our applications into SCE expire in March twenty twenty six. So that project has to, that side of the project has to move forward. And then the rest BT, PCT, BCT, there is only a limited amount of megawatts that are out there. So we're competing against other places in the state or in their service area to get that and allow that to be part of the program. So if we defer that project, we may not be able to move that site. If we don't move that project quickly, we may lose our line, our place in line for that as well as some of the funding that's related to the IRA, the investment. Um, so those are, those are the two drivers I see with those components and why not to break them up or one day or the other? Because you have a potential of losing something, but you also know it's spinning the money either.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, that, that's very true. Those were the two biggest points I wanted to make um uh about the SBCT and uh NEM two point O deadline. The other thing is, the more you break this project out into phases, the more expensive each phase is going to be because of just economies of scale. So that's another reason. Um. I just want to impress upon you again that you have a very attractive financing rate from Bank of America and there are programs available uh through government agencies. It'll take you a year to two years just to get those. Um, so I just want to caution you about that. Uh, yes, people will tell you that there is the infrastructure bank and there is California Energy Commission has a three million dollar uh max uh zero percent loan. They're out of funds right now, but it's, it, it is just going to take a long time. I would also like if the, the board agrees, I would like to address the pricing concern. Um, um, it is you know, thirty five hundred dollars over kilowatt is what that price was and ours is um forty three hundred, I think, or forty two hundred, something like that. That contract was signed in January, the thirty five hundred one was signed in January of twenty twenty three. That means the pricing was done approximately, you know, it takes time to find, sign a contract. So it was, it's a year old. If you look up any pricing, there's a California construction cost index. There's been an eleven percent increase in just construction costs since then. So that brings up us to like thirty eight hundred, thirty eight fifty actually. So that bridges the gap. I do think that the fact that we have long runs and we have multiple projects does cost more. Um, and ultimately you're comparing apples and oranges. As I mentioned to somebody, it's like two years ago, you built a custom house of four thousand square feet for three hundred dollars a square foot. Now you're saying your custom house of six thousand square feet is, you know, four hundred dollars a square foot. But they're two entirely different animals. You can't say like, if that was that much, how is this? To go from one to another will take such forensics to come up with what are the differences are. So there are so many differences on each site that it's very difficult to just say that was thirty five hundred, you are at, you know, now at forty three hundred. So you're, you're, uh, you know, charging, um, your, your pricing is high. It, it's, it's very difficult. I've been in the industry for a long, long time and I can't tell you, you know, looking at, you give me a project, uh, and I can't tell you, you know, just on the face of it that that's a high price or that's a low price. You really have to dig really deep into all this and price every project itself to figure out. So we've done the best we can. And again, as I mentioned, we've never come to the board and said we are the low price leader. We're not. We are literally the gold standard in California for solar project, for any energy project. And we have the best reputation, the most resources. You know, we can manage the Inflation Reduction Act for you, the applications for um low income open on October nineteenth for a month, but you have another opportunity next year. So we, we have everything in control. The bottom line is, even over twenty five years, you're saving twenty four million. Let's say you're paying half a million more or seven fifty. Is that really enough to make you change everything and, you know, not do the project? You're still saving twenty four million. You know, don't forget the big picture. You're saving twenty four million over the long run. You don't like what I'm saying, you?
As my husband would say, it's not standard at all. I appreciate your answer. I, I have just one more question and then I'll, I'll relinquish the mic here. Um, staff, can, can we get your honest opinion to the board from our staff as far as where this sits right now? Does everyone on staff feel this is sound enough for us to continue? Or do we need to go through the process of an RFP and see who bids? And how much will that cost the district if we make that decision?
Some of those questions I can't answer, but the first one I do, I always bring you my honest opinion. I never come to you and try to be dishonest. So with that being said, um as NG just brought up, if one of the, if this project was bid in the beginning of this year and we wanted to add or last year and we added ten percent, now you're at four thousand dollars per kilowatt or megawatt times four point two is sixteen point eight. Their cost is seventeen point eight. As the slides, the last slide said and the slides up, the cost doesn't have to be the lowest, but it should be competitive. Competitive is the right word. I always look at it with buying a car. Not all of us buy the cheapest car. We have a, we have a mindset of what we want, what we're looking for. So from that perspective, is that million dollars that big of a difference between the two? That's to me, based on, we know that they've spent several hundred thousand dollars on the engineering to get us to here, even though that was at risk and it was no cost. That is a cost, part of the overhead that's in this project. The confirmed savings is there. Kenwood Energy has said this is what it is. The cash flows look good. The contract, they've met us and every term we've asked for. The urgencies, we've removed those. So it's now really comes down to contract and price. We've negotiated the contract. We're in good, we're in good standing. Now it comes really down to price and how, how much do we want to spend? That is really where we're at right now from a staff perspective because we know there's savings. We said that in our first presentation. We know that this is a great project. It's going to save the district money over the long term. But we can save more. And that's where we're sort of at. So can I recommend this going forward? I know it's the right decision for, is it the right price? I still don't know because I'm not in the energy world. We have an expert that's standing in front of us with their number. It's came, it's come down sub- substantially one and a half million dollars. Are we close? We are close. But is it the best price? We probably won't know unless we go out and do an RFP. Now, I would like to bring up that the, the SEP project that we just did, the supplemental environmental project that we just did, when we went out to bid, we got a higher than expected prices because of the inflation, the concerns with risk and things like that. If we were to go down this path with this project, there's no guarantee that wouldn't happen with this project as well. So there is a risk by changing horses at this point, if you will. Uh, Shu just did a great job of explaining some of the things that we'd have to do. Would we be able to refine? Would we be able to find other financing? Yes. Would we be able to bid this and still meet our deadlines? Absolutely. But there isn't, just like there's no guarantee that we'd get that grant money, there's no guarantee we would get a better price down the line. It's not an easy decision. And I apologize that I still haven't given you a recommendation because I don't know what competitive means in this sense.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you.
Robert?
Uh, Arturo. You made a comment that is concerning to me, which is uh, take away the IRA. And you said, we can't do this. Is that what you said?
It makes it difficult for us to come up with the numbers to make it work. So technically, no, we can't.
Okay, that's all the answer I need. Thank you.
Ivan, anything further?
Um, a question for Tim of just um, is there any projects similar to this that you've bid more recently than that January approval for the project that we're comparing? And uh, are those costs higher?
Not, not that's comparable. Um, that, that's the most comparable project and um so I, I, no, I, I think the, the table that I have up there is the most representative that I have.
Okay, and then along the lines of what is competitive, um NG, the gold standard, would you say they're the gold price? And how would you compare yourself maybe to the rest of the industry? Are you middle of the pack? I, I'm just trying to get an idea of what our range would be should we go out for a bid? Are we? I guess, what's your thoughts?
Okay, um. I, I think Kenwood Energy is the gold standard. Also, we are consultants though, so we're not, we're not bidding projects. Um, what we would help you do is if you were to go out to an RFP, if I, I think we would first of all, you'd have to have an RFP for a consultant. If we were lucky enough to win and, and be your consultant moving forward, we would write the request for proposal and help you go out to bid. That, to address your specific question is I'm pretty confident you can get this project in for somewhere near the price that I have in that table.
Okay, and then um maybe a question more for staff or or I guess for you as well, Tim. If we were to go out for bid, um, are you confident that there's a number of companies we could choose that could help us still meet the deadlines that we have to, you know, check all these boxes to hopefully get our funding?
I believe that there is.
And uh, question for staff, what do you think? And a question for staff, what do you think the timeline would be? Should we not go with NG and go out for bid? As far as moving this project forward and would that hurt our financing in a way that, you know, if we're gonna save ten percent by going with another company, what are we gonna spend on financing should the financing go up?
Arturo, if I misspeak in this, please correct me, but I think when him, when Arturo and I were talking about, we were talking about the interest rates and knowing that the interest rates will probably go up a little bit and then they'll go start going down, let's say in a five-year period. If we were to refinance this in five years, what would our total savings be of this effort? It'd be about four hundred thousand dollars. So let's say we spend a million now, but we'd save four hundred thousand with the financing that's in front of me, I think would be the question there. The other, from a timing perspective, we do on-call service engineering contracts. This one would be a little bit differently, but we would work with Kenwood Energies to make sure that we put together an RFP to make sure we get a contractor or get an engineer, and then we would put together the bid package to get a design bid and move that forward. From what the conversations that we've had with Tim, we believe that we can still meet that NIM two point oh deadline in excuse me, in March of twenty twenty six. So we do have flexibility, but it is that window of opportunity continues to to get closed a little bit more as each month goes through. What Angie's talked about is a hundred percent accurate. These things need to be ordered. We need to do some of the things. We don't want the switchgear, as Director Meyerhoffen brought up, be delayed and slow down the our rest BCT project. So there's a lot of moving parts to this project and of course, the financing is yet another component on top of that. So from that perspective, we could go a different direction. We do have options. The opportunity for that is limited and it's also a little bit of an unknown. So it that's, it goes back to that same term that um, I hate to put Tim on the hook on this, but he put that word out there, competitive, and that's where that's the one thing that I've always struggled with. Is can we save more by going out and delaying the discussion a little bit more? I don't think it's going to increase ten percent to get us to that million dollar number, but we don't know what that's gonna be. We just don't know. So um, I think we have done a great job working with NG. They've met us halfway on a lot of these things, if not coming all the way to our side on many of them. The price is there, the contract is there. Um, it's just one of those things where um, there's some risk involved. And there's a risk in every project we take. Even when we rebid the SEP, we, it didn't necessarily go down. It stayed about the same. So there's always a risk. And that's the, that's the difficult part of of the recommendation and how this moves forward. But if we want to delay this action and continue to talk about it because we want to negotiate price, we can, we can do that too. We just may lose the opportunity for the BOA loan.
And um. Do you see us going out to bid and pushing this project multiple months? Does that hurt our chances in getting that funding for six million?
Uh, well, so what it would do is that IRA low income, we would have to then wait and get it next year versus this year. So that would be another risk that you're taking, but I I can't see the number, but I believe it's less than a million dollars. Tim, what's that number on that slide?
Uh, which slide was that?
One more, that one right there. Yeah, the low income bonus is one point seven. So if we were to miss that opportunity this year and then miss it again next year because we fell out of line, if you will, then that's sort of the risk that we're up against is that one point seven number. Um, and that's why it's so important to look at some of these numbers together because if right now the delta between with a contingency is twenty point five to seventeen point two, that's three million dollars. It makes up this one point seven. But if it's something different than that, then it it tips the scale a different way. So and that's why I think that the price that we've brought to you at this point is something that uh, I I think has enough risk to it in both ways that it may be the good, the right time to move forward, only because we don't know what's going to happen when we actually go out to bid. Um, and that's the, that's the thing. We have a price in hand and um, as my grandma always used to say, one in the hands better than two in the bush. I don't know if this is the right one in my hand, but this is, this is close. So we can go out and do it and we could get the RFP out in the next four weeks. We could bring the engineer in and keep going. So.
The board permits, can I make a comment?
Go ahead.
Um, there's one more thing I want to do, uh, the board to remember. Um, we are poised to order panels and get them delivered in time for the ten percent. It's not a bonus, but if you don't spend five percent this year, you lose six hundred thousand, ten percent of the IRA amount. So we are very much uh, we have everything in line to order panels and deliver them in time so that the district doesn't lose six hundred thousand dollars in IRA funding. I see no way that you can do that if you go out to bid. That six hundred thousand will definitely go away.
Tim, do you wanna address that? Cause I didn't think that was the case.
Um, I I'm not following that. Um, I I was under the impression in the previous presentations that Ashu had done as he was talking about the low income community at ten percent. And that's the one point seven eight million, which we can apply for again next year. So I'm not aware of any uh, six hundred thousand that would go away this year.
There is uh, Tim, if um. So there is a penalty for delaying the project. So in twenty twenty three, if you, if you do not start the project in twenty twenty three, you get ninety percent of the credit. If you start the project, if you do not start the project in nineteen ninety uh, two thousand twenty. Did I say nineteen ninety three? If you don't start the project in twenty twenty three, you get ten percent penalty. If you don't start the project in twenty twenty four, you get an additional five percent penalty. In twenty twenty five and on, um, it it's, you know, you don't get any IRA benefit and that has to do with the low income credit. So, and I'm very sure about this. Um, so there is a way, what they define as start of construction is you have to, it's called a safe harbor definition. You have to spend five percent of the project cost this year. And spending five percent of the project cost, I don't know why I'm looking at him. It should be a recent quote. Um. Spending five percent of the project cost means that not only do we have to buy the panels, we have to deliver them. However, there is a caveat. We can take three and a half months if we invoice it and get paid for it. We have three and a half months to deliver the panels and still meet start of construction. We are all over this IRA. So, so that six hundred, ten percent of the IRA, which is approximately six hundred thousand, you will definitely lose it if you don't start construction this year.
Yeah, I we knew going into this that it was gonna be an expensive project. Um. I have heard nothing today that would cause me to have second thoughts about utilizing NG services. Um. I'd see problems of going out for additional bids of significantly delaying the project and it may cost us money in the long run. Um. I hadn't yet, haven't heard anything from staff that causes me concern um, about moving forward. Um. So I would like to see this project move ahead with NG with a, with maybe some minor adjustments in cost, which we can decide is decide uh, um, at the next meeting. But as it's presented today, I don't have a problem with what's been presented or I haven't heard any major concerns from an independent consultant who hasn't raised any red flags on this project. So I'm.
President Martin, I haven't had a chance to ask my questions.
Yeah, I'm I'm not done yet. You get your chance. I let everybody speak, so just hold yours. So um. Like I said, I I I'm I'm ready to move forward on this and taking it to the next phase. So Ted, you wanna say something?
Thank you, sir. Um, you said that you could tell I wasn't agreeing with what you were saying. Um. That was a joke. That that three hundred, four hundred dollar a square foot on a house is
Yeah.
That's a little out of my price range, so.
I have no idea how a house is cost. I just made some.
Yeah. Um, anyways. And it's hard to compare developing a house to putting solar panels in at one of our sites. So the contractor comes and he looks that, looks at, let's say, well twenty nine. Goes to well twenty nine and you have how many panels you've already wanna put in well twenty nine, right? So he knows the cost of the panels. That's already taken care of on this end. So now the contractor has to tell you what the, you already know that you're gonna order the uh, the metal stands for him, correct? So the contractor doesn't need to know that. He just needs to know what kind of footing he's gonna have to put in there. And if he has to cut a a road in there, it's gonna be a dirt road. So the contractor has to figure out how many man hours it's gonna take to put it together. And that's a simple task for the contractor. So for the contractor not to know that now in this, in this stage of the game and just to put everything together, I'm concerned that if we're not getting overcharged with the construction part of it. So what I'm saying is the contractor knows how many man hours it's gonna take to put the panels on that you're ordering, to put the stands together that you're ordering. The contractor just needs to know how many man hours to put it together.
Well, I never said that we don't know how many, what our price should be.
I know, I'm just saying that. You already know what the price is. I agree there.
We calculated all of that. We had three contractors walk it.
Each uh.
Right.
Site.
Yeah.
I believe you were saying you didn't know how much each site was gonna cost to put together.
No, no, I'm saying I don't know how much the project that Kenwood Energy is talking about, the cost is, you know, would.
No, I just, I misunderstood Director Duff's question there. Were you?
I'm just saying it's apples and oranges. I can't compare.
Let him answer the question, Ted. You keep talking over him, so.
If he wants to go, go ahead.
I'm, I was just saying that it's comparing apples and oranges because I don't know how to price that, what the, how to price that one megawatt project a year ago.
Okay.
You can't compare that project to this because these are both customized project. I never implied that we don't know how to price the project that we've put together and it is a complicated thing. It's not as.
I'm not questioning any of that.
Okay.
I was trying to explain here. What I, what I wanna know is, how much is the, is the contractor gonna charge for each site to put it together?
Uh, we disclose that to the district. You need, you need our price for each site. I've already told uh, the district what the price is.
The district already knows that now?
Yes.
Okay.
Always did from day one.
From day one?
Yeah, from two months ago at least. I've been breaking out the price. It's in the presentations.
All right, all right.
Yeah.
Okay, so. Okay, I misunderstood what the question was and. All right.
I I misunderstood you, that's all. Yeah.
So my next questions are for Arturo there. Arturo, refresh my memory now on the uh. It's gonna take two years before we start getting money back, so we're gonna be paying that without having any savings for two years, correct?
Correct.
And how much will those payments be every month? Well, approximately, you don't have those exactly.
I am negotiating with them because I do not want to build up on that uh, interest. Um, it's technically set up, so we don't pay anything and it builds up on the uh, principal. However, we would be paying interest over interest and I I don't like that idea. We wanna save money for the ratepayers, not add to it. Um, and so I'm negotiating with them to do interest-only payments at roughly seventy thousand dollars a month uh, for those eighteen months before we start paying down the principal.
Seventy thousand dollars a month on interest-only payments for approximately two years. Okay, and you have all the information you need to go to the bank and do a proper presentation to them?
Well, that's the thing. This, I I went to the bank and I asked this question. Is the financing contingent on the contract with NG? First, they said yes, and then they said, wait, no, it's not NG. It's a contract that you have to have in place in order for us to decide that you have a viable pro- uh, project so that we can finance it. So at this point, it's basically, if if this contract does not get approved, we don't have enough time to go find another vendor, another contract to go after that would uh, keep the financing going.
Okay, thank you. Now, President Martin, help me make my comments on this now or?
Just a point of, go ahead, just very quickly, I'm sorry, Director. Um, we are five minutes into our next meeting. We can either continue this conversation after our workshop. We can continue it to October twelfth. We, if the board so chooses, and then that way we'll be able to bring a clean contract to you. I've heard the one thing that I did write down is possibly still negotiating price. And we can continue to do that with NG, so so we do not delay our workshop starting point. May I suggest that we continue the public hearing to our study session date of October twelfth. We'll bring back a clean document. We'll bring back potentially a different price and then we can continue this conversation uh, at that time. That way we don't hold up our workshop. However, I did have, we can't see them on the screen. It typically, you know, the public comments at the beginning of the meeting, but somebody does have their hand up and I don't want, and typically we do take those questions. So just to bring it to everybody's attention, uh, I believe, uh, Director from Desert Water Agency has his hand up.
Yeah, uh, before I said that, Ivan.
Pushing it to the twelfth, does that hurt our B of A loan should we move forward?
Um, I also confirm that we're ready to go with the numbers by then. Uh, in fact, uh, Bank of America assured me that they would be able to extend the closing um, period for a couple of days. Uh, they don't wanna give me a number of days now because if it doesn't go through um, the approval with the contract, there's no need to do any of that. So I'm, they're gonna wait for us to tell them what's after this. So both our bond council and theirs are ready to go come December twelfth. That's literally the last day we have to make a decision in terms of the financing.
Thank you.
President Martin?
Yes.
I believe that I said, is this the time to make my director's comments on this or? And then you.
I thought that was what you've been doing.
No, I was asking questions and then you refer, when I asked that, you referred over to Mr. Mason.
Go ahead, go ahead.
All right, just making sure.
Right.
Okay. This has never been out for bid. And I think we really should send it out for bid. It's gonna delay it a little bit, but it may come, a bid may come in a a million dollars cheaper. We may save money on it. We may find a whole different thing. And we, this has never been out for bidding. Remember, we, we're under no obligation here when this was first presented to us. And I think it's unfair to the other people who might wanna bid on this, that if we don't put it out for bid. Thank you.
Ivan? Amber? Robert?
Uh, when we get to to the motion, but go ahead and take the public comments if you want.
Okay. We have any members of the public wishing to address the board?
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. I'll hold my comments uh, for the next meeting on the subject. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? At this point, I'll entertain a motion on there. Does anybody wanna make a motion?
Yes, I will make a motion and continue. I just, I just wanna express my one concern and that is the financial aspect. And when we saying this is not something that is financially feasible or painfully difficult for us, that is a concern. So we need uh, by the next meeting, I need to have some financial options so that I can make a a decision because um, if you're telling me flat out, look, we can't do it at this, then there's no, there's there's no reason to even debate it because if we can't afford it, we can't afford it. I don't see how we cannot afford it. I understand the savings, but if we can't afford the monthly bill, you know, I don't go out and buy cars for six hundred dollars a month. Why? Cause that's just way out of my budget. So I just need you to understand that I would like to see some options, okay? But I would make a motion, we continue this to uh, October, is it a study session October twelve?
Yes, it would be October twelfth.
October twelfth.
JP, are we, are we doing the right motion?
Yes, so you're gonna continue the regular meeting to the twelfth, correct?
It's a public hearing, so it would be the public hearing in regular meeting too. Yes. Thank you.
Second.
Okay, could I have a roll call vote?
Director Meyerhoffen?
No.
Director Duff?
Yes.
Director Griffith?
Hi.
Vice President Sewell?
Yes.
President Martin?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Okay, thank you, Asher. Okay, are we uh, done with this uh?
Yes, that closes this meeting and now we proceed to the workshop.
I'm gonna take a five-minute break.
Thank you.
Into the next meeting.